Is this part of our later discussion?
Okay, it's one o'clock, Tuesday, November 19th. Time for our regularly scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk, will you have a call before?
Yes, Mayor.
If you'd like, I think we have enough people in the room. We can do this really loudly. We had last year, a group of kids that said the pledge of allegiance really loud, and they were a bunch of kindergartners, I believe. So we'll see if this group can outperform that one. So let's stand and do the pledge right after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just bow your heads.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We come to you and we ask that you just be with our hearts, be with our families as we move into the holiday season, Lord. We ask that you just protect us and be with us all. Lord, be with this community, be with the leaders, and be with our first responders, Lord, as they go out and protect us all day long. Lord, we just pray that you continue blessing us with the weather. We enjoy the moisture. We're just, we're looking forward to some snow. I am anyway, I don't know about anybody else. I'm looking forward to the snow. So, Lord, we just ask that you just be with our hearts. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, great job on the pledge, everyone. And now we'll just move on to the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which if there are no corrections, will stand approved.
I see any corrections here?
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Hear none. Move on to the public comment. So this is a time where anybody can come up to the microphone. Please state your name. You have anything that's other than what's on the meeting notes, then we'll allow you to come up, and if you've got five minutes. Gary?
My name's Gary Dick. I'm here representing the owners of the Westlake Building on Fleming Street. It has become available for rent. And the reason they didn't submit an RFP was at the time, they had a verbal agreement. But the tenant has backed out. And so there is a 24,000-square-foot structure available for rent. And just wanted to make you aware of that before you made any decisions on what the city may possibly do for a temporary office building for the police department. Now, I did give her a handout that gives the specifics of what the building is and what the lease requirements are. Any of that could probably be negotiated with the owner. But at this time, they weren't available. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I appreciate, yeah, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Okay, well, if you have any questions, don't be afraid to call, or we can answer anything, and we can get keys to get in the facility anytime we want to.
All right, appreciate it, Gary.
Thank you.
Any other comments? See you none? We'll go ahead and move on to item six.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of November 19th through 26th as Garden City High School Cross Country Championship Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, make the motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. And I believe we have some champions in the room. Coaches, would you like an opportunity to come up and say anything?
I am John Ford. I'm the Assistant Athletic Director at Garden City High School. The coaches, cross-country coaches, because I don't think I can do this. They are not here tonight, or today, because they've got previous commitments and stuff. So they want to be here, but they can't be. So what I did on their behalf is I'm going to introduce our cross-country team. And it is a privilege to introduce Team Alternate Junior Uriel Garola, Junior Luis Martinez, Junior Jacob Pan Mieber, Junior and Regional Medalist Gabriel Martinez Acosta, Freshman and Regional Medalist, also finished 30th at State, Elmer Argueta. Guys, just line up right here. Face the crowd. Sophomore and Regional Medalist Jaden Smith, and he finished 21st at State. Senior and Regional Medalist Taren Castro, he finished 18th at State. Senior, I'm going to do a junior first here. Junior and Regional Champion Trevor Frye, he finished 9th at State. I think if they had an all-state team, he would be first-team at State. And then, last but not least, Senior and Western Athletic Conference Runner of the Year, Regional Runner-Up Hayden Nimichek. He finished 10th at State, and he is first-team all-state. This is our Regional Championship, Western Athletic Conference Championship, and State Champion Cross Country Team. They got the tryback down.
Great job, fellas. Hey, if you want to just hang out up here for a second, we do have a proclamation that we're going to read, and then we'll get a picture after that. We do want to mention also Coach Krista Lindenberger and Derek Algrim and Ashley Winters for their commitment to these runners and their dedication to the time that they took to create these champions. So as long as they're not at another school trying to find another job, I'll kind of allow them not to be here today. Yeah, exactly. Yes, but yeah, go ahead and hang out up here, fellas. We'll read the proclamation. Whereas the Garden City High School Buffalo Boys Cross Country Team won the 6A Kansas State Cross Country Championship for the first time in program history. And whereas a team, these student athletes scored just 66 points. And whereas the 2024 state champions consisted of Trevor Frye, Hayden Nimichek, Taren Castro, Jaden Smith, Elmer Argueta, Luis Martinez, Uriel Garola, and Jacob Pamenter, Gabriel Martinez Acosta. And whereas the city, or whereas Garden City High School team also includes a dedicated staff of head coach Krista Lindenberger, assistant coach Derek Algrim, and assistant coach Ashley Winters. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do take great pleasure in expressing the appreciation of the City Commission and all citizens of this community on this unique achievement, and hereby proclaim the week of November 19th through the 26th of 2024 as Garden City High School Cross Country Championship Week, and call upon all citizens of our community to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life. Signed and sealed this 19th day of November 2024. Who wants to receive this?
Yeah, squeeze it a little tighter there.
You guys might want to make two lines.
Item 6B, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 as Match Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I move that we approve December 3rd, 2024 as Match Day in Garden City, Kansas.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 7A, like to make the, oh, yeah, yeah. Come on up.
Yeah, we do have some folks here who want to come up and speak on behalf of the Match Day program.
Thank you. Thank you for the proclamation. I know we've become a broken record. This is our eighth edition of Match Day. And again, we hope to rally the whole community behind this giving campaign for the local nonprofits. The campaign started yesterday, Monday, November 18th. And it runs two weeks up to December 3rd, which is the actual Match Day, the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, also known as Giving Tuesday. And on that day only, we will have an in-person event at the United Methodist Church here in Garden City, and all the participating nonprofits are present with their little display about their work, and of course, to also receive donations. And it's a unique opportunity. For those of you who are not aware, in this two-week period, the Western Kansas Community Foundation provides $100,000 in matching dollars for any gifts between $20 and $2,000 per person, per family, per organization. So it's an incredible opportunity for every nonprofit that's participating. We have 49 this year to increase the gifts that they normally give. And it's a wonderful incentive for the end-of-year giving that a lot of the nonprofits depend on. So we have a couple of new organizations each year, and that's the same this year. So really looking forward to it. People can give online. They can give with a check that can be mailed to our office or brought by our office. And then, of course, on Giving Tuesday itself, on Match Day, December 3rd, they can come to the Methodist Church to join in that celebration with the in-person event from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. So I hope you can come and spread the word. Thank you for the opportunity. And we have one profit represented here, Cecilia Douglas. But I want to shout out to my team also here, present with the blue t-shirts, Stacy Hahn, Donna Tanner, Bailey Seder. It's really the collaborative effort of that team behind the scenes that nobody sees very often. But there is a lot going on behind the scenes to make this work. Last year, we brought in over $900,000 with this campaign. A lot of those gifts come in with increments of $20, $30. And a lot of that has to be manually processed. So you can imagine the amount of manual labor that goes into this. But it's a lot of fun, too, and of course, for the common good. So we're looking forward to it, and thank you again for this opportunity.
It's exciting that you've outgrown your office, and now that you're in there bigger. So you'll probably outgrow that soon, too. But yeah, thank you for all the work. And also, the supporting nonprofits in our community, you're one of the few organizations that really is out for each and every one of them. And so it's really exciting. And $900,000, we're believing you're going to exceed that. And you know, who knows what's next?
Who knows what's next, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we know you have a lot of organizations that are signed up. Can you kind of just briefly touch on how those new organizations that come to town get with you and be able to get signed up with you as well?
Yeah, thank you. So the organizations that are participating, they all have an endowed fund with the foundation. So you know, it's not for every nonprofit organization. They have to have that fund with us. But I think the way we raise the funds for these nonprofits is a really good way to help them to become more sustainable. Because the matching dollars that we provide go back into the funds that they have in the foundation. And the money that's received during the campaign is for them to keep. It's 100% for the organizations. But the new organizations that are added each year, they have first started the fund with us, and then they are eligible to participate. So we have, for example, the Red Dogs Children's Museum this year from Garden City, which is a real cool new initiative, a children's museum in town. And yeah, they're very active already, making presentations throughout the region, actually, not just in Garden City. And they hope, of course, at some point, that they can establish a real location. So this is their startup phase, and they're using Match Day to raise funds to build a real museum. So that's just one example.
Yeah. Well, great job. Well, I'll present the proclamation if everyone wants. I'll invite everyone to come up, and we'll take a picture after that, so.
Great, great.
Any other questions? Okay, whereas Match Day was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Match Day is a celebration of philanthropy, philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Match Day is a day where citizens work together to ship. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Match Day and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in Garden City. And whereas Match Day is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim December 3rd, 2024 as Match Day in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Sign and seal this 19th day of November.
All right. Item 7A. Try this again. The, it's an update to the governing body that the City of Garden City was not successful in being awarded a KDOT Fall Cost Share Program. We submitted the installation of the singles at Fleming and Spruce, if you recall, at a previous meeting. So the balance of the city manager's report is staff reports. We're available to answer those questions if you have them. I'd also like to point out, under manager's report, now that we have the final numbers from Friday's end-of-drive event, the city employees as part of, it's been customary the last decade or so, in October, we host a United Way corporate campaign to help assist Fannie County United Way. And our employees last year set a record giving total of just over $40,000. This year, we raised just under $50,000 in pledges. And if you take some fundraising that happened Friday afternoon as part of the event, I believe we exceeded $50,000 in pledges and one-time gifts to United Way. So really proud of our staff and their generosity. Again, that's from employees. The gifts from their payroll deduction that they pledged for the coming year.
I did want to say, I mean, I know these reports, I mean, they're incredible information, all of them. I really just wanted to say thank you for also the one that really stood out for me this time was the social media report. And I think the format out of the wins and the things that they're, and how they're making changes and adapting, I think that's really valuable. And seeing where people are getting their news. I know that our Facebook page and also our text caster has grown exponentially. And I mean, it really is a place where people get a lot of information. So finding out that that's actually working, I just wanted to say thank you to the communications department. I know you take a lot of pictures behind the camera. But I think that the key learnings and the different things that you're showing us is really, now, a lot of these social media things, I'm not on. So Instagram, I know you're there. I have no idea about what goes on there. And X, same thing. But I really appreciate all of the, just all the information that really shows that we're really working to impact every demographic in our community. So I do want to say thank you for that report, plus all the other reports. Really good information, and I'll tell you, it really makes a difference, having that information.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on those? Okay, the meetings of note are listed on the agenda. Will any of those requiring RSVPs please get with the city clerk's office on those, and they'll take care of you. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance, item 9A. And if approved, the ordinance would be number 2575-2024A.
I make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2575, let me start over, 2575-2024A.
Second.
Okay, it's been the motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Under ordinances and resolutions, item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance levying a city retailer's sales tax in the amount of one-half of 1% within the City of Garden City, Kansas. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 3000-2024.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So to give you some background, on April 16th, 2024, the City Commission approved submitting a proposition to the qualified electors of the City of Garden City, Kansas, to levy a one and, a one-half of 1% retailer's sales tax in the City of Garden City. This proposition was included as a ballot question at the election held on August 6th, 2024. A majority of the electors of the City of Garden City approved the levy of the retailer's sales tax in the amount of one-half of 1% to be levied for a period of 10 years. The revenues from this tax will be used to stabilize the city's ad valorem property tax and finance construction and maintenance of transportation improvements. The retailer's sales tax shall take effect on October 1st, 2025, or on the earliest date thereafter that the Kansas Department of Revenue can begin collecting such retailer's sales tax and shall continue for a period of 10 years from the date first levied. Alternatives, so the governing body may approve the ordinance or may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the ordinance. And then upon approval of this ordinance, the city will submit the required documentation to the Kansas Department of Revenue so that the tax may begin to be levied on October 1st, 2025. This new levy will take effect the day following the previously approved retailer's sales tax of one-half of 1% expiring on September 30th, 2025. Therefore, the sales tax rate for the City of Garden City will not experience a change with the initiation of the new levy.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance 3000-2024.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion with Tom, Commissioner Winn, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing the time and date of a public hearing for the purpose of giving notice of a public hearing on the advisability of creating a community improvement district located at 401 East Kansas Avenue. And if approved, it would be resolution number 3139-2024.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In December of 2020, 4A Properties, Inc., the buyer, entered into an agreement with the City of Garden City to purchase and develop property located at 401 East Kansas. On September 19th, 2024, they filed a petition proposing the creation of a Community Improvement District, or CID, to be known as 4A Properties, Inc., 401 East Kansas CID. The project is anticipated to include a retail ice cream store, an imported products retailer, and a spa and salon. As a result of the petition, the City Commission has asked to set a public hearing for December 17th, 2024, at 1:30 PM in this room at your, at that City Commission meeting. City Bond Council Mary Carson has assisted in the preparation of today's resolution, which has also been approved by the developer. The alternatives before you are to approve the resolution as presented, or you may deny and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the approval of the resolution, and there is no fiscal impact.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 3139-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, the next, oh, no. Item 10C, I'm sorry. The governing body is asked to consider approve a resolution required to establish urban area boundary lines for Garden City, Kansas. And if approved, it would be, it would be resolution 3140-2024.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Kind of a lengthy background, but I'll go ahead and go through this. The Federal Highway Act of 1973 required that roads in the federal aid highway system must be functionally classified. Despite changes in the definitions of federal aid and functional classification, the legislative requirement to maintain a functional classification system of roadways is still in effect today. After each census, the Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, has asked all the counties and urban areas to review and update their urban area boundaries, the UAB, functionality classified roads. Functional classification of the nation's highways, roads, and streets is used for many transportation planning and public policy purposes within states and local communities. It provides essential input to the apportionment of federal funds. It helps provide a framework for priorities in bid, bridge replacement, surface maintenance, disaster recovery, snow removal, or any other program where funds must be allocated. It can also provide a structure for development priorities and community planning. Functional classification is the process in which streets and highways are grouped into hierarchical classes according to the character and service of which they are designed to provide. It is essential to understand that individual roads and streets do not work independently, but as a network of roads. Functional classification defines the part of any particular road or street should play in serving the flow of trips through a highway network. The urban area boundary, the UAB, delineates the area which the transportation purposes contains urban traffic characteristics. The new UAB is to include any annexations and development areas within or outside the city that may take on an urban character in the next five to 10 years. And that's the map that's included that we upgraded. The UAB, once approved by the Federal Highway Administration, then is used by functional classifications, the boundary definitions for the highway, Federal Highway Administration, and KDOT. City staff and Wilson and Company reviewed the areas of the previous urban area boundaries and updated the urban area boundaries map, which is attached in your background information there. This map is included for the reference material provided in the attachments. Like I said, the urban area boundaries map also requires confirmation from the Fannie County Commissioners that they occur with the updated map. Approval of this resolution and subsequent Federal Highway Administration approval will initiate the review of functional classifications. Once that process is complete, staff will return to the governing body with a resolution for the functional classifications of our roadways. That also includes information from, to be the acting city engineer. So your alternatives, the governing body may choose to pass the resolution as presented. The governing body may choose to not pass the resolution as presented. Or the governing body may choose to direct staff to modify the urban area boundaries maps as so directed by the commission. Staff recommends you approve the resolution as presented. And under the fiscal note, there is no financial impact to the city by passing this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So based on the approval, Mike, what does this require then? So different classifications will require different treatment? Or what does that, so, once this is all classified or passed, how does that impact the work that we do as a city or you do as the, as the road and department?
If we would go for any kind of federal grants that KDOT would have to approve ahead of time, or... ahead of time, or in conjunction with, it would have to be classified in this area map that we're asking you guys to approve today.
So that just gives you that, that step is done, and then otherwise you'd have to do it on the.
Otherwise, it wouldn't qualify.
Okay.
And the area that's kind of outlined in the yellow dashed marks is the area that we suggest to include.
The yellow or the orange? It looks orange to me, but it could be yellow.
Yeah, it could be yellow, yeah.
That's, looks orange to me.
Okay.
That's funny.
Okay. I am getting more trouble with ayes every year, so.
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve resolution 3140-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, so on the memo, it says that the county reviewed this on October, no action was taken by them?
The county commissioners, my understanding is they did approve this, or they're going to, they'll sign off on it after you guys approve it today, if you choose to.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Okay, there has been a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item D, E, and F are all nuisance resolutions, we'll read the background on the first one. The process described in the first one is consistent with the second and third one as well. On the second and third one, we'll simply read the address and give an opportunity that if anybody's in the public and wants to speak to this issue, any of the three, they're welcome to do so. Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3141-2024, and would abate nuisance conditions at 1801 Wilcox Street.
All right, mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. For your consideration today, we have a nuisance complaint at the 1801 Wilcox Street, it is a washer located on the exterior of the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions, we have sent two notices to the property owner, one on October 8th, 2024, and the other one on October 25th, 2024. With no ability to contact them, we have not had any communication with them. For your alternatives today, alternative number one, the governing body may approve the tax resolution, which will allow staff to bait the nuisance, and number two, the governing body may not approve the tax resolution. Staff's recommendation is that the governing body may approve the tax resolution, and for the fiscal note, a cost incurred by the city shall be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the environmental nuisance is located.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 3141-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved would be resolution number 3142-2024, and abate nuisance conditions at 1218 Mulberry Street.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 3142-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Item 10F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which if approved would be resolution number 3143-2024, and abate nuisance conditions at 1605 Conrad Avenue.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 3143-2024.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ready for 12, new business, 12A, the governing body is asked to consider proposals for a temporary location for the Garden City Police Department. Chief Pruitt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider proposals for a temporary location for the Garden City Police Department. During the 18 June 2024 meeting, the city commission approved a decision to notify Fannie County of the termination of the existing agreement between the city of Garden City and Fannie County for the use of the law enforcement center. This decision reflects the governing body's commitment to finding a new, more functional solution, including potential construction of a new jail and refurbishment of the LEC. The termination is intended as a temporary measure while a new facility is planned, allowing both the Garden City Police Department and the Fannie County Sheriff's Office to eventually reunite in an upgraded, co-located facility. Following the city commission's June 18 decision, a request for proposal was approved for release to explore alternative facilities or solutions for a temporary facility for the GCPD. This RFP was proa, was a proactive step towards addressing the inadequacies of the current LEC and ensuring suitable work conditions for law enforcement personnel in the interim. The city of Garden City received two proposals for the interim facility for, of the GCPD. A review committee consisting of several staff members, two governing body representatives, two Public Safety Advisory Board representatives met to review both proposals, ask questions, and tour the proposed space. Alternative one, Premier Homes proposes a new, custom-built 13,392-square-foot facility located at 2,052 East Labrador Boulevard, and designed specifically for law enforcement operations. This new construction would allow flexibility and includes a parking lot with 37 spaces as outlined in the attached key variables comparison. The facility is expected to be ready within nine months of being issued a building permit, offering a tailored solution for the GCPD. However, extra security and data infrastructure would be handled separately. This proposal includes options for either lease or purchase. The committee that reviewed the proposals discussed a preference towards purchasing due to the uncertainty related to the duration of use. The chart below outlines the projected difference between the lease and purchase options. A more detailed version of this is attached. You're gonna have to, I can read these numbers, but it's a lot of numbers.
It's okay.
Okay. Alternative two, Wharton's Limited LLC proposes a remodel of a 20,000-square-foot facility located at 601 North Main Street, which includes additional space upstairs and in the basement. Their proposal highlights essential features such as exclusive tenant access, 24/7 operational capacity, additional space for training and parking options as outlined in the attached key variables comparison. The remodel would include upgrades such as ADA compliant restrooms, roof improvements, electrical upgrades, and a modern HVAC installation. This building is listed on the Register of Historic Kansas Places, so the scope of the remodel will require approval from the State Historic Preservation Office. This proposal includes options for either a lease or purchase. The committee that reviewed the proposals discussed a preference towards purchasing due to uncertainty related to the duration of use. The chart below outlines the projected difference between the lease and purchase options, and a more detailed version of this is attached with your, your information. A fire suppression system is not included in neither proposal, but may be considered depending on anticipated future use of both sites. Staff has prepared a more detailed table of key variables for consideration from both proposals that is attached. It should be noted that the scope of, included in this RFP includes all GCPD operations except for our 911 Communication Center. That is being treated as a separate project due to the additional complexities and technology needs, and that project proposal will be presented at a future city commission meeting. The alternatives you have before you is, number one, the governing body may approve the proposal from Premier Homes and direct staff to draft an agreement for a lease or purchase. Number two, the governing body may approve the proposal from Wharton's LLC and direct staff to draft an agreement for a lease or purchase, or number three, the governing body may deny both proposals and provide further, further direction. Staff has no recommendation, and the fiscal note depends on the selected proposal and the desire to lease or purchase the identified space. I think that Mr. Greenley from Mayor Homes is here to answer any questions, and I think that maybe Mr. and Mrs. Wharton might be on their way. I also have staff members here that can answer questions if you have those.
I have some questions. So this idea of temporary, so in thinking about, you know, where the, I mean, the issues with the LEC have been ongoing for a long time, and so now, it sounds like there's some movement on the county side to build a new jail, and all those kind of things, so when we talk about temporary, what are you anticipating, do you think? Is it three years? Is it five years? Or, and I'm not saying you don't, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but I'm questioning the word temporary, and it makes me think, I mean, do we need to treat this as temporary, or do we need to treat this as the new home of the Garden City Police Department? Because temporary to me would be, you know, 12 to eight, you know, 12 to 18 months, but I mean, when you get to two and three years, and five years later, to me, that seems less than temporary, and then, so how you spend those dollars, especially taxpayers' dollars, should be really important going, moving forward. So I'm curious about what your, and I don't know, I've watched their meetings, but I can't figure out what their timetable is for the jail, or their timetable is for the repairs, or any of those kind of things, so to me, it feels more of a permanent solution rather than temporary.
So, I have some comments, I guess, and maybe.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, you, you probably are following this, and I know you have, have a group of people that you're meeting with, that I, you know, I don't see, there's no minutes of those, so I don't know what's being discussed in those, so.
So, several people have asked what my preference is, and I think that I have three responsibilities here.
Yeah.
The first and foremost is protecting my people, making sure that they have a safe space, all right? The second, and probably very close, is making sure that our service to the public doesn't change, no matter where we're at. And third is making sure that you guys have all the information that I can provide or gather for you guys to make a decision, well-informed decision. We had a very short fuse, and I think that we did the best that we could. Now, I think that you guys have a very hard decision to make, and it involves reading tea leaves, future fortune telling, and there's no Zoltar machine that you can drop a quarter into, and it's gonna give you the answer, because there's a lot of assumptions that go into it, and I think that, to your point, the county and their process for the LEC and the refurbishment of and building of a new jail, we haven't gotten a solid timeline, and it all depends on when stuff gets put on a ballot and gets put in front of the voting public to pay for it, so I can't answer your question, but I think any point from three to the possibility of this lasting a decade, so that's my best.
No, I appreciate that, and you being upfront and honest, I mean, and again, I know there's no definite, but as far as, you know, the process, I didn't know if they were gonna bring before the voters, or if they were gonna save money like they did for the new health department, or how that was gonna work, but again, you know, I didn't see them, there's really no funding mechanism at this time to really do either, or I mean, if they're gonna bond it, and they've not really led with any information, so.
And Chief, you might, you might speak too on the, a topic, I guess, of, there's still buzz out there about the relationship between the police department and the sheriff's department. I think on the city part, we've done our best to kind of articulate what our relationship is with the sheriff's, sheriff's office, and we intend fully to go back and share that space with them. Have you, I just wanna get that out there before, I mean, because people are talking about, they think it's because of our relationship that we're moving out, and that's not the case here.
No, we absolutely work in and handle the sheriff's office. Anytime they ask for help, or anytime we ask for help, I think both agencies bend over backwards to make that happen, and will continue to do so.
Sure.
It's, it's the only way that we're successful in rural West Kansas.
Yeah. So I know that, also, the other thing I wanted to say, there was a presentation, I don't know, it's been about a year ago, of the new campus that we're building out near the, oh, electric department, and does that include, I don't, I know it doesn't include the police department, but does it include a new administration building? I was looking for those, there was a whole booklet given to us, and I couldn't find it, I looked all weekend for it, but I didn't get a chance. Is there a new administration building that's being proposed for that campus?
It was in the site layout. Yeah, and I think there was a discussion from our goal-setting retreat on that as well, so we, we read that, but.
That was really kind of looking at what could possibly be.
Right.
Accomplished or done in that area in the future, but.
Because I'm wondering if we spend dollars, I mean, this building, you know, years ago, this also was brought up as a possible alternative for the police department, and that's building a new administration building. Knowing the security and those things, and I know the proximity to the jail and to the sheriff's department, I mean, would this be an option? I mean, I know it's not considered, but I know it was brought up years ago as far as an option, you know, using this building, and then building a new administration building, because I'm looking at the costs, and I asked for costs from, from, from Matt, concerning the airport was about 900 and some dollars, 940 dollars a square foot, so that was commercial, and then the, the other fire station was like 450. Well, if you look at the square foot costs on these ones, I mean, they're really low, and I mean, yeah, I consider this a commercial building, and the security needs of a police department even greater. So both of these, these quotes seem all really low to me, when you consider this is a commercial building, I can't remember what it figured out to be the name, but the square footage and what the costs of the remodels, they seem really, greatly under almost half of what the cost of the, of the fire station was, and I don't consider a police department any, any more important or any less need of security. So I'm just wondering if some of these alternatives, and the other thing I wanna be transparent about, ask Matt if there, is there land that we own, that we could build on, that, you know, that way we wouldn't have to pay for the land, and then we'd actually own the building at the end of it, so those are some of the things, and when I saw this, I thought this was gonna be on last week, or last commission meeting, it wasn't, so that's where I got, as I got to thinking, you know, I wanna make sure that we're doing the best possible thing for tax holders, knowing that, I agree with you, I don't think it's a three-year or five-year, I think it is a 10-year prospect because of just how much needs to be done over there, and a whole new jail and those kind of things. So, to me, that's not really temporary. So I mean, spending this much money, I just wanna be really, make sure we're responsible for what we're gonna do with that money.
Okay, any other questions?
So in terms of the locations, go ahead.
Go ahead.
In terms of location, Chief, how do you foresee, because they're two different, they're across town, how do you foresee operations to change, as one being downtown, the other being north of town?
So I think it's, to be very, very transparent, I'm gonna be the one that's affected most if we, you know, with the one that's in the north area. I'm the one that has to have meetings really here. As far as officers go, probably the most important people we're talking about, and what they do on a daily basis, they have mobile offices, so having a space where they can come do paperwork, I don't know that that really matters, but convenience is, is always nice, but I don't know that my convenience matters. So, as far as location goes on both of them, I have concerns with having, the town downtown proposal, space is very, very enticing, however, I have a, I have some scar tissue when it comes to old buildings.
Yeah.
You, a new build being in the north, the north part of town, that's a long ways away from the city center and some of the relationships that go on with the sheriff's office, the fire department, that type of thing, so that's something that I think we'll have to work through as an organization, not that it's a, it's not a deal breaker, I think, so.
And speaking about parking, at least, 26 compared to 37, how, how does that compare for the vehicles that you guys own?
Both are concerns a little bit, I think maybe we were a little short-sighted when we, in the RFP, we looked at what our footprint is, and we didn't account for maybe public. Both of them are gonna have, we're gonna have to take that into account, downtown being that, you know, there's businesses that we have to take into account for, and Main Street, I think it's doable on each one of them, but it's something that hindsight being 2020, we should have proposed a little bit more space, but.
These numbers that we just got on the bench, have you seen these numbers?
Very, very closely.
Okay. Does that, does that add in then to the, these numbers that we see in our memo that you presented then? I guess not, probably not, or?
That proposal was received, that was received, that.
After, okay.
So it's a separate.
Yeah, I'm kind of along the lines with Commissioner Andrew. You know, this is going to, you know, we say temporary, but, you know, ten years, depending on how, how fast the county moves on this building, you know, trying to get it put together, get something passed by the public, and then build, you know, we could be in, like you said, up to a decade in this facility, and then looking at what we do after we do move out, and then reconnect back into the law enforcement center with the sheriff's department, you know. For me, I'd hate to put a commission in the future into a bind, I mean, this is a big decision for this commission. Again, too, you know, this is a lot of taxpayer dollars coming out of the general fund to build or lease a facility for a number of years. And then just in general discussion with, as we were looking at the committee, you know, the, and kind of like what Commissioner Andrew was stating, the square foot, or dollars per square foot seemed just a little low on the proposals for me. Visiting with an architect, kind of in the area, you know, it seemed like we were, it seemed like the square footage for the dollars were a little low. On that, you know, it is a quick process. I understand the police department's concerned, and we're wanting them out of the facility. I mean, we voted for them to move out of the facility, too, to the conditions in the facility, but me as a commissioner, I want to do this right for our, for our staff, for the police department. It is our largest department of employees, and trying to put them in a place that will suit their needs, but also the community's needs as well, as well as serving and taking care, being a good steward of the tax dollars that we're going to invest into whatever facility we're going to look at investing into. That's where I'm at on this.
I would say I do appreciate, I mean, I know, I didn't realize how many people go in and out of the police department, but I mean, you know, it's, I mean, that whole area down there is very, it's a very, it's a very well-used building. So I do think the consideration of how easy it is to get in and out of the building for the public is important. And I think, so that, parking is one of the things that really would put it over the, if I choose one over the other, it'd be because of the parking and being able to make sure we dedicate parking, you know, especially up front for the public. But again, I'm like you, I hesitate, knowing all the issues with the old building, I mean, do we redo another old building and then hope for the best, you know, and then think that, you know, we're going to get that? But I, like I said, I'm like you, the dollars, the square footage dollars just seem a little bit low to me. I mean, and so I don't want to be surprised at the end, I mean, I don't want the taxpayers to be surprised, I don't want you to be surprised, but again, and we want a quality building, you know, something that's going to, I mean, ten years is not a, not a short period of time. And then making sure that, you know, if and when we go back with the sheriff's department, you know, if that's going to work out. But again, there's lots of things that have, in the past, we've really done some great partnerships with, and they've not continued, and then it's been okay. I mean, I do hope that that doesn't happen with that, but if it does, I mean, I want us to make sure that we're prepared, understand that this is our new home for our police department, so.
And like you said, too, the RFP was pretty general and wide open, so it was something that kind of took a shot in the dark at to see what, what was out there and what came up with. You know, we did get, we did get another, at the beginning of the meeting, we got another proposal, I guess, on another building, but we need to really kind of look at what we've got in front of us right now and see what direction we want to take this, though.
Do you want Gary to speak, or?
I see he left. Oh, Gary Greenly, he left. Yeah, he can come up and speak if he'd like to. I don't know if we see.
Thank you, sorry for the late one here. We've met with the committee twice, and we've had intense conversations with PD for their specific needs. Their needs are very specific, specific of what they are. If you look at their, some of the questions that you had before are listed on here, additional parking, all those things. We made it where you can pick and choose what you wanted, security, cameras. We had to wait for bids coming in, so they came in after Wednesday. We talked about the, we gave different options for lease, for purchase, with any different ones. The purchase is less upfront, because we're going to build the building complete and give it to you complete. This is not something that you get in construction along the pace as we go, so you don't have to worry about cost overruns. There's a cost overrun, it's on us. The other thing is, we were very, we actively tried to make it less expensive with the PD cell, floor coverings, things like that. It's built as a frame building instead of a block building. Insulation values are higher, roofing's easier. HVAC went a different way, so it wasn't hundreds of thousands of dollars more expensive. There's a lot of things we did that took care of what the building needs, and it's designed specifically for the PD. We also have it where we didn't have the initial fourteen parking spaces on the side in case they wanted to move dispatch out there. There's room in that, on the location to add more onto it, so dispatch could go out there. Because I'm with you guys, there's no way it's going to be five years. There's no way, it's going to be longer, so we wanted to make sure that it was specific PD. There's specific, specific security, there's holding cells that are designed specifically for that, special doors, locks, all sorts of things, bulletproof glass, and all sorts of things on it. This is less expensive because we're not shooting for the money. We designed it to be affordable. In case it's a lease, or in case it's long-term, we handle it either way. Any questions? Excuse me, can you answer?
No, I appreciate, I mean, and the, I mean, the plans and the construction, I mean, you can tell you, you've had meetings and you listened to what they had requested, and so, I mean, I really appreciate that, so.
The other thing, if you look at the most recent plan, we've actually done several different variations of it. The most recent plan, and actually, the building can actually be split into two. So once the, once the PD goes back to the LEC or wherever they end up, the building can be split into two different organizations go in there, the city chooses to purchase it, or later on we get it back as a lease. It's designed to be affordable, it's designed to make sense, it's designed to fit their needs specifically, and they're very specific needs.
Yeah, when I saw where it was at, I thought, I hope they never have to pull out during the traffic for the high school, because that's crazy up there, so.
The nice thing about that is it's close to the high school.
Yeah, that's true. Response would be very quick.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Gary.
Any other questions for Chief?
So the two options we have, we also have two options, I have that of either leasing or buying, and I think the direction of the committee was that, due to the uncertainty of how long we'll be there, there's a preference towards purchasing, and I think that is a good call. So I'm definitely leaning on purchasing, yeah.
So as far as the finances, so, I mean, just want to make sure how we're going to fund this, or do we have to geo-bond this, or do we have, I mean, is the money we're saving from not being inside of the LEC, is that going to be enough to do a purchase? And so those are the kind of things, and I didn't see any fiscal notes, so.
Short answer is, it depends a little bit what direction we want to go. So once we kind of identify what that path forward is, yes, some of it will come from some savings that we've had over the years, some of it will come from the portion that we're not then paying to the county, but it's likely that we'll have to continue to look at other, either geo-debt bonding a portion of it, or looking at the reserves that we have available. So we'll have to kind of do a deep dive into what that looks like. I think we'll have a little bit better direction once we figure out if there is a desire to go down the path of lease or purchase, and kind of what those, we anticipate what those total costs are based on which of those options ultimately we select. So short answer is, a lot more analysis needs to be done.
Yeah, no, no, I think.
We're bringing back kind of that whole proposal, but everything's kind of on the table at this point.
I'm sorry, just, this is a lot to take in. This is a big decision, I mean, and it was, you know, and no matter how you studied it, it really, I mean, there is no one right answer, I mean, I think there's lots of ways that we could go. But again, I really appreciate Chief really narrowing down, here's the three things that matter most to me. And so I think that, that's important, I mean, for the commission to hear, but then also knowing that the dollars we spend, I mean, are really taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that we're responsible. And again, this is a tough budget year as it was, and then, you know, we're adding more on, but we, as a commission, knew when we pulled out of the LEC for safety reasons, and have a, you know, a place that, you know, the people can work together, so.
Are we, so going back through the RFP a few times, I believe that it, for the timeframe, the decision on making a purchase was not described in the RFP portion. Are we at any conflict with that not being stated in there for the timeframe being three to five years? But then it's just of an extension based on the operation needs?
So I think when we wrote the RFP, and kind of to Commissioner Sessna's point, it was kind of all from one end of the spectrum to the other.
All options.
We had to write it so generally, because we didn't, we really didn't know, A, what was available, B, what our options were. So it was a lease, lease-to-purchase or outright purchase when we wrote it. I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we, we didn't overstep or have any conflicts So, I mean, any other questions for Chief?
Chief, are there any concerns regarding timetable, our agreement ending with the LEC?
I think the one thing that we don't control in this whole process is time, so yes, absolutely. I can't speak for the county. I think that we've had enough open communication with them that, that should have get to the point that we're towards the end of the timetable, we probably need to come back to the table and talk through what that looks like, so. Plus moving operations.
That's a lot.
Having our PD operations, that's eighty-five to a hundred people, depending on what day it is, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work, so, yes.
Thank you.
And I, I mean, I do appreciate the work that's put into it, and I do want to get you guys out of that building so that it's a better environment for you to work in. It's just hard for me to make a decision on a, you know, we have a new build, and then we have a remodel, which is pretty tough to make an apples-to-apples decision on, so. I mean, that's my only concern is what is, I mean, we have a lot of add-ons here from when Gary, you know, you provided us with the cost estimate on after we got, you know, after we had included this in the proposal, so have we thought of everything? I guess that's my concern, is do we have everything we need in a new build, or is it going to continue to increase in costs? So same thing with the, same thing with the remodel, we can go there, like you said, we can, we don't have a magic ball, and we can't predict what this is going to cost us in the future, or what the timeline is for the county. So we just, I think we got to make a smart decision, as Commissioner Sessna had mentioned, and this would be a big decision for us in the future. I think we just need to do it right. So having the information transparent enough to where we can make an informed decision, that's probably my biggest thing about these proposals.
I think a couple of things to your point that you made is, with the timeframe that we had, I think that we did the best that we could, getting stuff from both entities for the, for information, so you can make a decision, largely in part to Captain Oaks doing that work and tracking that stuff down, so I think he needs to be publicly recognized. Plus, both, both Mr. and Mrs. Horton and Mr. Greenly were open books on stuff when we went to them with requests and getting back into the building, or getting information from them. So I think, I guess to your point, yes, I agree, we did the best we could with the time we had, and there were a lot of people that did a lot of work.
I mean, if we go construction-wise, there wasn't really information, I mean, how long would it take to build? I mean, it didn't really show in the proposal the length of time.
I think they said they'd be in there.
Nine months.
Nine months, yeah.
Sorry.
No, there was a lot of, yeah, and I think it almost took that amount of time just to remodel, and you have no idea what you're getting into with that whole of a building either, so.
And our contract with the county?
End of the year, next year.
End of next year.
Okay, so it's end of this, okay, well, we won't make that, so, if it's this year.
And I believe we can negotiate with the county on that contract with, with an extension, if we need to on that matter. I just, I think, I think we just need to make it right, we need to, if we do need a little bit more time, if it's month two or three, then I, I mean, there's no hurting in asking for it, so.
I guess, what specifically do you guys as commissioner need to make it better, to give you a specific answer to make your decision? Like what specific items do you need? Do you need an itemized list of all the instructions? Do you need an itemized list of, of the remodel? Like what do you specifically need to help make your decision? Because if it's, if it's, if that's the case, like if it's hard to pinpoint what it is, then it comes down to a value-based decision, like what we individually value, and then no amount of numbers can.
Yeah, so I guess the thing is, I want to make sure, so here, I'm not really sure how these, so in the memo, the five-year costs are for purchase, I'm not interested in leasing a building that we're going to be in for ten years, because I mean, I think we could, so I'm, that's not really an option for me. I mean, I know it's a triple-net lease, and you could do whatever, but from what I understand on this one, I'm not really sure, it says here, purchase on alternative one is three thousand, or three million six hundred and sixteen dollars, nine hundred and twenty, nine hundred and twenty dollars. But, so I'm not really sure, this one looks lower on, when I'm looking at the handout that just got handed out. So I'm not really sure what the true cost is, is it three million five hundred and sixty-four, eight hundred with all the options, or is it, so if that, that would help me in clarifying that.
Okay, so if you look at the numbers, you have it one through eleven.
Right. Yes, sorry, yeah, I should be able to figure this out, and I wish I could, but I.
The numbers are in one to eleven.
Okay.
With the additions of what you wanted to put in and what you didn't. These are options that the police department would like to have, need to have, but each one has a number on it. When you ask about costs, when we took these numbers, these were actual bids, we didn't mark them up to a percent and all that kind of thing. There's not four hundred thousand dollars in landscaping on this, we kept the numbers where they're real. So this one, you can take and choose, and choose between, so if you take, if all options one through eleven are chosen, that's the three hundred and six, three million six hundred and two thousand eight hundred. That's if everything on this is chosen, that's all that's on it. And if we need that broken down better, we can do that as well.
No, I, yeah, alternative one on it here says purchase is three million six hundred and sixteen dollars, six hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So that's where I was, because it was less, and I'm anticipating with all these add-ons it was going to be more, so that's where.
Number nine, we actually had airlocks in it, and nobody realized that was a request or a need, so we took that out. We tried to, we tried to streamline this as best we could. Some things are needed, we can add back in, we can put a hundred thousand dollar landscape if you'd like, but we didn't think that's really important. So some of the architect things you get there, they're, they're so over the top with a lot of their add-ons. We tried not to do that, so this is affordable. It's a big number no matter what. And these are actually, like, they are obvious, and that's for security cameras, that's actually really a bid, and that's his bid. We didn't mark it up, we didn't do anything, that's just after.
Yeah. I guess I'm just surprised that we didn't have more, you know, more alternatives, you know, the two, I think, and then being not the same, you know, coming one, a new build, and then this idea of a remodel. So I was always thinking that we're going to have a remodel, and that was the thing, we're going to remodel a building, and so the idea of building something really never came into play until the first time we saw this. So that's where I'm, you know, and then considering that as an alternative, and, you know, about the same price as the remodel.
That's what, that was our point all along.
Right.
You take a remodel, the big O, who knows what's coming.
Right.
Surprises that you don't expect, and there will be surprises.
Yeah.
No matter what the remodel is, there will be surprises. So with the new construction, again, we're offering to build this and hand it to you completely done, so cost overruns are non-issue. These are the numbers that we'll give you, if you want to do that. We can lease one year, go to purchase after that, but when we build it upfront, it's no sales tax. That's a considerable amount of money on three point six million dollar building.
So how did you keep the cost down? I mean, because the thing, because, you know, I looked at the, you know, commercial building costs are a lot higher, so I mean, I'm impressed that you kept the cost down, I'm just saying it's hard to believe you kept it down that low, so.
We're, we are a residential builder, so we build commercial, we've done commercial, but our normal thing is. but our normal thing is residential, but we don't get to make the kind of money in residential that you do in commercial. And the workmanship is, is, it's held to a tighter standard in residential, because you're going to live there and look at it all day, every day. So we just, just like we would, just found the best qualified people, they gave us the best price, we got bids on all this.
And I appreciate your local company too, so.
Yeah, it took a little bit, but we have people we work with a lot, and they transferred their savings over to us.
Oh, I appreciate that. And that you passed it on, that's, to me, is impressive, so.
Well, it could have been a lease, it could have been mine at the end.
Right.
There's some to say there.
Right, yeah.
I was wondering if our commission has any sentiment in opposition to purchasing? Because that would help with my next question.
No, I mean, I mean, to answer your question, I think we're just giving the perspective of us when we buy, I mean, looking at the term, if we go out past five years, I mean, we've already bought.
Right.
What price of the construction is, so, yeah, that's, to me, that's a no-brainer, that going out, but do we have, to Commissioner Underwood's point, do we have land that we can build a building on? I mean.
I mean, so have you built a building, I mean, but.
Is, there's still a lot of information that, for me, is missing that I need.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I think it makes a lot of sense to postpone the decision to a later meeting with specifics of what exactly would look like more, much more tightened numbers on what it would look like to purchase both properties, and then maybe a potential for if we could build on property that the city owns.
I don't know that we, I mean, I checked with Matt, I don't know that we have any property that would be large enough, or do you know, Matt? I know they're smaller parcels, I know we have that property out there, but it's.
Yeah, the same answer that you gave earlier, we have property that's part of the, was originally planned for the utility and public works campus between Harvest Lane and Jenny Barker Road north of US 50, kind of behind Loves, I guess, if you're looking at local landmarks. It's the biggest tract of land, the city does own parcels, but I didn't have time to review between your email and, and the meeting, any of our small sort of one-off parcels, if they were large enough to.
I was wondering if there was something that was more downtown or more located near here, if there was something like that.
We don't own vacant land near downtown.
At all, okay.
Just parking lots.
Yeah, I guess we do have vacant land, but it's, yeah, it's got cars on it.
We need the parking, so.
Solve one problem, create another, so. Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Wynn's question on, you know, I certainly understand, this is undoubtedly a difficult decision, I do think, Commissioner Wynn's point, that's probably down to a values-based decision when you can't, you know, it's not a low bid, right? You don't have identical factors going across the board, and delaying it won't make identical factors, you can wait, kick this out two weeks, a month, you still have proposals that are very different, a remodel and a new construction. If you want to add in new construction on another site, it's still new construction versus a remodel. If you want to add the remodel that came in, offer that came in today to you outside of the process that you issued an RFP for, that's still going to be, so you're still going to end up with kind of remodel versus if the commission wants to decide, hey, we're going to abandon remodels, only go to new construction, or abandon new construction, only go to remodels, then maybe you can get it down closer to apples-to-apples, but I still don't think it's going to be apples-to-apples. You're going to have different properties, you're going to have different pros and cons, you're going to have different cost estimates. I think to the extent that the commission can give to us through this public discussion, specifics on what you don't see in the staff work in front of you that you need to see that lets us know what work we need to go do, that would be helpful.
Well, I will say though, that now that you've gone through the RFP process and you've gotten two different proposals, I think the RFP could be major, that could be improved, and you know specifically what you want. So that is an option that is not, you know, easy either, too. So you could actually go out and do the RFP and have something that's, you know, now a little bit more formulated, where before I don't think you have that information. But I don't know that.
So that would be rejecting these offers and going out and, and the commission directing the staff to issue a second RFP, and if that's what the commission would like to do, that direction would be helpful.
Yeah.
But I don't think you can run concurrent RFPs, leaving one open and then going and doing another RFP for the same thing, just because the decision's uncomfortable.
Well, and adding on, I mean, adding on a building at the last moment, that, to me, that doesn't seem fair either, especially when the work has been done on the RFP. If we accept this RFP, so you, you know, I don't really feel like that you can actually consider another building adding it yesterday. I mean, even though, I mean, that, that is a valid option, I don't think you can add it on today, so.
Okay, for me at least, I would, go ahead. For me at least, I would like to see a much more itemized list for the reconstruction as opposed to purchase with much tighter range. I don't necessarily know how tight of a range. And then, for the interest of other commissioners, maybe a, a short exploration of certain parcels that could potentially, whether they are viable or not, could potentially be possible for construction.
So is that?
No, I, that's, that's just feedback of what I, yeah, of course.
That's this direction. So I'm leaning toward purchase, you know, and again, and a new build, I mean, a new build with a purchase, just because I, you know, we've experienced that for how many years with the old building, with the LAC, I'm not saying it's an old building, but and again, and then moving to a new building with some of the issues with it, or the old building with the issues with that remodel, the amount of parking, and knowing how the public, I think, I like the layout of the, one, the new build, just because I think it's easier for the public and to be accessible to the police department. So, I mean, if we were voting today, I mean, you know, that's where I'd be leaning. I do, I do appreciate the itemized, just making sure we're understanding the total cost, so that when we do that, then it's a way to figure out, how are we going to fund this, so that we're not, you know, we're really doing what we can with the dollars we have, understanding that that will make it into next year even a harder budget year, because again, we're going to be doing something a little bit different than we anticipated.
I think one thing to be careful of, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yep, no.
With the itemized on the remodel, that's something that's going to be on us, and I don't know that we can provide the clarity or the, the granular detail that you're looking for, because we would have to, I mean, for our policies, we'd have to go out and get somebody to come and help us do that, so, that's something to be careful of.
Also, the thing to maybe note, too, is what do you do on the backend of that if you do purchase? What's that going to be when we move back into the LEC building? I mean, that's down the road.
If it's the new purchase, if it's the new building option, actually both options on this, the intent was to sell. You sell, you sell it, so we didn't incorporate net costs, because that's completely hypothetical. You tell me what remodeled, large, older building in the downtown can resell for once remodeled, I don't know. Even new construction, I mean, you might be able to go out and find some comps, but that's a pretty large building, and so I don't know that, you know, there's a guaranteed buyer on the backside of it. Part of the reason when we visited with, when the committee visited with Gary, we talked about designing that in a way that could be divided into, be more likely, whether it's lease for him or a, a purchase and a sell for us, that you'd have the opportunity to, maybe more, more likely to find a buyer, I guess. But didn't incorporate the net costs into it, that would just be a windfall that would, would happen at the end of the, the life of needing to use it if you decided you didn't need to use it anymore.
And neither one of these has a basement for the, I know right now that the dispatch is located in the basement of the LAC, so if they were located or co-lated somewhere nearby, would there just be a different type of construction to protect everything? Or were they, because I know with the new build, unless you put a basement, you wouldn't have one, but.
The dispatch is going to, is something separate than what we're going to put into this building. We're just moving our personnel into the building, and the dispatch is going to go somewhere else, correct?
Dispatch is a much deeper conversation.
Much more expensive, I'm sure, too.
Dispatches aren't required to be in basements necessarily, they are over in the LAC, just because of the way that building's kind of configured with the California split when you walk in now. The, there, your first question was, do either of these have a basement? Yes, the old Dome Murray building has a basement, but it doesn't have, it would likely be redeveloped into use because there's no, there's no elevator, it's got a second floor, too, they're really kind of partial and towards the back of the building, we wouldn't probably use either of those operationally.
Earlier, Chief, you said that the Dome Murray building is enticing with the square footage. That's a difference of about less than 7,000 square feet compared to the new build. What difference does that make, I guess, from it being enticing, 20,000 and 13,000?
I think when we're looking at the remodel of the LAC, we're looking at getting bigger, more space to use, so for us, we're always, this seems like we're always fighting for space either to do training or to have more office space or more conference space, or, so I think that's the enticing piece of it, and on the flip side of that, it's a remodel of an old building, you know, again, that's our issue, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Landgraf?
Chief, have we, have we, it's my being that question, have we had specific contact with the county staff, just making sure that once our agreement is up, if we need to extend it month by month for just, say, building or for remodeling, are we still good? Because the last thing I want is contract to end, and it's a hard out.
We haven't had specific conversations with, but I think the lines of communication are open enough that that could happen.
Okay.
Okay, I don't want to push the meeting along, but if there's any other questions that you'd like to answer, or maybe if anyone has a direction to give to staff or offer a motion?
Mayor, we postponed this decision to a later meeting and give staff further direction to provide an itemized list with consideration of available parcels that we could construct on.
So I don't, would that be okay to postpone, or do we need to reject that we go in a different direction?
I think if we rejected, we wouldn't be able to reconsider these items, correct? Counsel?
Yeah, I don't think what you're doing is rejecting it, if you're just asking for information, more information on one of the proposals, which is what it sounds like you're asking for.
But a, but a rejection, I mean, we wouldn't be able to reconsider these two bids in the future?
That would be the idea, correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, any further discussion?
So if we postpone, I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to have this, I mean, I'd rather take this up before the end of the year, just so that we know, you know, that this is going to move forward, I mean, so, I mean, I, if we do this, I'd like to amend that we put it either our first or second meeting in December, so that there's no dragging on, because again, I know that they need to have a decision made, and that, that might give us a chance to make sure we check with the county and what would that look like, you know, but I, I don't want to, I think that if we either schedule it for one of those two meetings to make sure it happens before the end of the year, I mean, I'd be more comfortable with voting for it. Other than that, you know, that's the only thing I'd like to add, so.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Underwood, I want to tie cap on that.
Yep. So either our first meeting in December or, the first meeting would be better, because during the second meeting, it's, would that give staff enough time for?
Danielle.
That packet's going to go out next week from today, so we'd have the rest of this week to accomplish. So if the list is what available city parcels are for construction of the premier homes proposal, am I interpreting that correctly? Or is it for going out and getting an architect and, and having that designed and having, like, this would be an alternate location if the Greenly proposal, the premier home proposal is open to that? I don't know that we should, you might want to ask him, I don't know that we can force him to do that, but. Okay, we could, we could line that up by next Tuesday and have that for the first meeting in December. If it, the additional itemization, that's a little bit of a guess, because how much itemization is needed? I mean, I think we could get as much as we have, but I can't guarantee that that will be enough for all five of you, because there might be some of it that we don't.
It's okay.
We don't, that isn't fully designed yet, right?
I mean, yeah, the best.
Yeah, we're going off of a site plan, not full, full architectural drawings at this point in time.
Can we just add the first meeting?
Well, with no questions, I can, we have to vote on this one, I think, right, and then.
Yeah, because then, well, yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
But I guess the question is, if staff recognizes the, the urgency of it, I necessarily know if we need to amend the motion.
That's fine, yeah, we can leave that then, just as long as.
We'll meet, we'll meet the expectation.
I guess I had one more question, if, so the proposal that was handed to us in the earlier meeting could be taken on consideration, is that off the table?
I would not consider it.
It's not part of the RFP, so I don't really, you'd have to reject everything, and then it'd have to be reintroduced, and, you know, so I mean, I mean, it's unfortunate, but I mean, the timing, but.
Well, and I think we, as a commission, through our discussion here today, I mean, this, this says lease, and I think we are leaning more towards purchase.
Because of the time.
Because we understand that it's, it's going to be more of a time commitment for us wherever we, wherever we station our, our, our staff, so, and this is lease.
Right, and so.
I would, I would say, this came in after the fact, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to focus on what we got in front of us today, and there is a, there is a motion on the floor.
Right.
For those.
Yeah, and I just, so I just wanted to extend that piece of the information, as far as, like, these other two bids that came in, there was no option to purchase in the beginning also, so could that line of communication be offered to buy that building if they would, they would, they would sell?
I think it's quite difficult with an RFP process, I think, like, that's the process that we've agreed to, and having to slide in someone backdoor is not necessarily fair for the bidders, but also for our future bid process in general.
Yeah, I think, you know, we set, we set it out, we gave a timeline, a deadline, this is what we got, this is what we need to, unless, unless we just deny everything and start over, which I don't think that's the direction, especially with the motion and everything, because if we want, if we're wanting to look at this, we need to deny everything and start over. Again, this came in after the fact of the deadline, we need to look at the two items that are in front of us and how to proceed forward with that. Again, it's that, I want, I want to get our staff out of the building where they're in because of the conditions that they're facing every day. I want to get them into a facility that will function and work for them in the best needs possible, but I want to do it the right way, and I want to come back and go, you know, or leave it for future commissions going, what did those guys come up with? I just need, if we can just take a little more time.
Right.
Make the right decision and move forward, I'm all, I'm all in favor of it. We got these two, we got these two proposals in front of us, we made the decision to get a little more time, what, what the motion is, get a little more time, get a little more information, that'll come back to us in December, that first meeting.
And we'll make a decision.
On the second, I think is the date. Third, thank you, that's close, third, and hopefully we can move forward.
Nope, thank you for the clarification, I just want to ask questions, because I know there'll be questions after this meeting, and we want to be prepared as far as the discussions that we had here today, so.
I just think there's, just from the commission's speaking, from the discussion of the commission today, I think we just need a little more clarity before we make that, push that, make that decision or push the button to move forward, is what it sounds like. And this, this motion tells, tells staff to, if we can get that little bit more clarity on this, that'll help the commission make that decision.
Because of fiscal, the financing is going to be important, I mean, it's an important aspect of that, you know, along with the locations, and then the itemized list and the financing, that's important for me, so.
Cool, we're in agreeance with that motion, and, okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Chief? Oh, looked like you were going to say something, but just in case we had any questions, okay. I, I just want to thank the committee for their efforts, I know it was, it was a tight timeline, there was a lot of information presented. I know it was, it was a tight timeline, there was a lot of information presented. I want to thank especially.
EJ.
EJ for his work on this, well, all of, all of the staff that, you know, that, you know, worked on the finance to try to figure out everything and put the memo together for us. You know, it is a big decision, and I want to, from my standpoint, I want to make this right. I want to make, so if we get a little more information, I think that'll help us to clarify, to move forward on whatever direction. I think we did clarify a few things, but I think if staff has that direction to move forward, to get us that information by the third of December, and I think we can, we can make that work. Call a question.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor? Mayor, can I have a, can you please reread what the motion was?
So the motion was?
Try to sneak that in before you voted.
Sure.
The motion was to postpone the decision to a later meeting, and the consensus is December 3rd. And, pardon?
And that's it?
No, oh, and then to provide staff further direction to provide an itemized list and potential parcels that we could build on.
And financing.
That wasn't in the motion.
That wasn't in the motion.
Sorry.
Hopefully it can be included.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve Garden City Water Reuse Project Task Order Number Two, as presented by Burns and McDonald for $1,755,200. Fred?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Congress approved funding bill in December of 2022 that included an appropriation of the city of Garden City to implement the project that reclaimed treated wastewater to benefit proportion of the law of Oxford that serves the city of Garden City. The legislation provides $19,100,000 in federal funding to pursue a reuse project, including matching, including local matching in Kansas State Water Plan Funds, which have been reserved. The total project cost is anticipated to be $23,875,000. After issuing a request for qualifications in April 2023 from qualified firms to assist with project tasks, governing body approved a proposal from Burns and McDonald at the July 20, July 6th, 2023 meeting. That approval included a master service agreement and task order number one. Burns and McDonald has completed the NEPA review, the National Environmental Policy Act review, and developed infrastructure piping alignments, affluent water storage plans, pump station location proposals, and infiltration basin location activities as all part of that NEPA review. They've developed a work plan, prepared formal project application documents that were submitted to the Environmental Protection Agency for review, and that review was completed in June 2024. Then a public comment period began, which was, and was completed for the NEPA review. So that gets us to today. The task order presented to the governing body today addresses the tasks required to complete the final project designs outlined in the approved work plan. Assist with preparation of any required easements required for project infrastructure, submit the project to KDHE for review and approval, and prepare project construction bid package and advertise the project, complete the bid process and evaluation, and prepare the contract documents. The cost of these services is proposed by Burns and McDonald not to exceed $1,692,200 for the project design and field services, and $63,000 for easement acquisition assistance. The costs are projected per Burns and McDonald's rate sheet, which is attached with the project documents on this memo. Burns and McDonald anticipates completing this task by the end of 2025. That's for the design task, and I'm sure there'll be other questions. I do have Jake White here with Burns and McDonald, who can answer any questions when we wrap up the memo here. Alternatives presented to the governing body, the governing body may choose to approve task order two for the Garden City Water Reuse Project for an amount not to exceed Alternative number two, the governing body may choose not to approve task order number two for the Garden City Water Reuse Project, or the governing body may choose to direct staff to provide an alternate solution regarding the design task order presented for consideration at a future meeting. Staff recommends governing body approve task order two for the city, Garden City Water Reuse Project for an amount not to exceed $1,755,200. If approved by the governing body, Burns and McDonald anticipates completing this task in 2025. Work will begin prior to 2024, and in some regards is already underway, just by nature of what they've been doing for us in the past. Contractual items are outlined in the rubric below. The project does have $300,000 of funding set aside in Kansas State Water Plan Funds, and the city intends to utilize those funds for this phase of the project. The state Water Plan Funds will reduce the city's financial contribution for this task order from an anticipated $438,000 to $138,000. The city will fund the remaining balance from the water, wastewater fund cash balance. And the work plan and the task order file are attached with the memo. So I offer the floor to Mr. White, and if you have any questions that we can answer together or separately.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jake White, Burns and McDonald. For those of you I've met before, it's great to see you again. For those of you I have not met, it's very nice to meet you. So obviously, we've been working on this project for, for just over a year now, really this specific project that is funded with EPA funds and also from the Kansas Water Office funds. It is a fantastic project. We're obviously very, very excited to be working with the city. And really what this next phase of the project, the task order you have in front of you, is to take us through detailed design bidding phase, so we can then be prepared for construction.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve task order number two for the Garden City Water Reuse Project for an amount not to exceed $1,755,200.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion?
I had one question, just, how many, how many task orders are there in a project like this?
So we've got task order one, which is like preliminary stuff, NEPA permitting, this is the detailed design, and then there will be a final task order for construction phase services, so this one, three.
Okay, all right.
And completion of this entire project, I mean, kind of a late timeline? I know this part of it is 2025, but I think was, there was something in here, like, saying that it was going to be completed by some date, but?
2027.
2027, okay.
Completion.
Okay. I thought that's what it was, but, okay.
Thank you. It's been a motion on the floor, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a task order for Wilson Engineering for $84,845 to complete a traffic management plan for northeast Garden City, Kansas.
Good afternoon, again, Mayor and Commission. There are currently four projects, Sports of the World Phase Two, Petroresdences, Icon Cinemas, and O'Reilly's, all underway in the northeast portion of Garden City. Each of these projects is of a size that is sufficient enough to require a traffic impact study. In addition to these projects already underway, it's anticipated that development, that this development could spur future growth in the area. As a result, staff believe it would be in our best interest to conduct a traffic management plan for this entire area, to be able to take a more holistic approach with several projects utilizing the same infrastructure corridors. This will allow for more robust decisions, discussions with developers, instead of taking kind of a piece-by-piece approach with each of these individual projects doing their own traffic impact studies. Developments within the scope of the study would be asked to financially contribute to this overall study in lieu of completing their own traffic impact study. And it should be noted that some traffic analysis may still be required by the developers to address some site-specific needs, but it wouldn't be the full scope of a traditional traffic impact study. It's expected that the shared cost would ultimately be less than it would have been for each development to complete their independent traffic impact study. Upon completion, if you do approve this task order to move forward, that study would be presented to the Traffic Advisory Committee before being brought to you all for final consideration. So the alternatives before you are, the city commission may authorize the task order from, for Wilson Engineering in the amount of $84,845, or you may not authorize that task order. Staff, staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve that task order in an amount not to exceed $84,845. This would be paid for out of the city's general fund and revenues that we receive from developers. If they choose to do this in lieu of their own study, would again go into the, the general fund to help offset that cost. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Now, with the amount of construction that's going on up there, I think this is, and already it's becoming congested and trying to figure out everything, so I think it's money well spent.
Just looking at the map, it's amazing, the footprint, how it's starting to move to the northeast. I mean, that's just in the next year or two, what the community is going to look like. It's pretty impressive.
So Danielle, what do we do with this information, like, with the discussions that you have with developers, just like, this is a good, better to build this here than there?
Yeah, so it takes a look at all of these kind of impacted intersections, and that's where we can have conversations to say, does it make sense to put in a signalized intersection? Does it make sense to add turning lanes? What from an infrastructure perspective do we need to do because of the development that's coming down the pipe? Then we can figure out, okay, is a little bit of this attributed to two or three major developments, at which point they'll be asked to cover the cost of those infrastructure improvements? So that's really kind of the information that we glean from this. And I think even from the developer perspective, certainly there's a lot of developers and property owners in this area, but we have heard from three of them that are kind of excited about this, so that they don't, again, have to kind of do a piecemeal approach, and then we come back and say, okay, well, but there are some of these other things that all contribute to these same infrastructure corridors. So that's really kind of the information that we'll get, is what improvements are going to be needed at each of these kind of intersections and within these corridors to help support the flow of traffic that this would generate.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we authorize the task order for Wilson Engineering in the amount of $84,845.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I basically just want to make a comment, the fact that we do have a lot of development up here in this part of town, and I appreciate the efforts and the developers who are wishing to invest in our community, so I want to just give the thanks to them, and if you just want to pass that information along, that we appreciate what they're doing, and we appreciate the city on their staff's point and the review of the intersect, traffic study, so that as well is well planning for the city's growth, so appreciate those efforts. And, and like you said, just mentioning to the developers on what they can do with the information as far as when they have it. It's, yeah, it's great planning, so just good job on overall selling Garden City, so keep growing. Thanks.
Yep, we'll pass that along, and I'm sure Lana will, too.
Thanks, Lana. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the East Garden Village Solid Waste Collection Agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. City of Garden City and Western Kansas Housing LLC, or East Garden Village, entered into a 10-year agreement dated May 20th, 2014, to transition the collection of residential solid waste from Western Kansas Housing to the city. East Garden Village residential mobile home park consisting of approximately 668 mobile homes. This agreement expired on May 20th, 2024. The city also agreed to reimburse East Garden Village up to $2,850 per month for the monthly landfill usage fees charged for the collection of residential solid waste items that would not fit into the Polycarts that we service out there. And this is for not participating in the fall, the spring and fall cleanups that we offer. On June 18th, 2024, the governing body approved extending the solid waste agreement until September 30th of 2024, to allow staff and East Garden Village owners to discuss the arrangement. And then on September 17th of 2024, the governing body approved extending the solid waste agreement until December 31st of 2024, to allow staff to procure two 20-yard roll-off containers. And those containers were to, they got delayed, and they were to replace the current roll-off containers that are, they're provided by a third party. Staff has received the 20, the two 20-yard containers and has the equipment in place to put them at the East Garden Village and provide the service. The change to the arrangement would be that the city would provide the two 20-yard containers and service them, rather than a third party providing the containers and service, which will eliminate the monthly cost of $2,850. The term of this agreement will be five years, to commence January 1st of 2025 and end on January 30th, 31st of 2030, unless the customer, East Garden Village sells, transfers, or otherwise conveys ownership and/or other reason explained in the agreement. There's two alternatives before you here. The governing body may approve the East Garden Village Solid Waste Agreement effective January 1st of 2025, or two, the governing body may not approve the East Garden Village Solid Waste Collection Agreement and redirect staff. The recommendation is, staff recommends the governing body approve the East Garden Village Solid Waste Collection Agreement effective January 1st of 2025. And the fiscal note, the cost of service for the 20, the two 20-yard containers is estimated to be around $400 to $600 monthly, which will come from the solid waste landfill charges at GL Code 551-575-71-5434. With that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor, will we approve the East Garden Village Solid Waste Collection Agreement effective January 1st, 2025?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the distribution of downtown development funds for 105 West Grant Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Dante Huber has applied to the Downtown Development Fund for the interior remodel located at 105 West Grant Avenue. The unit is currently vacant, but with a future location of individual offices and retail space. A building permit was issued after completing the building review process on October 9th, 2024. Staff determined the eligible work includes demolition, professional fees, and general remodeling in order to accommodate offices and a retailer in the space. The total costs for the eligible work are estimated to be $222,353.12. Based on the project's scope and design plan submitted, staff concluded a score of seven points. The project was awarded four points for allowing a new retail business, two points for 25% or less of project cost being used for facade improvements, and another point awarded for potentially drawing in customers from the surrounding area. A score of seven points calculates a potential reimbursement of 14% of the eligible costs, or $31,129.44. All application materials, including reimbursement score sheet, are attached. This is the fifth Downtown Development Fund considered by the governing body in 2024. As a result, the Downtown Development Fund has a current unawarded balance of $68,078.60. In the memo is a list of previous four Downtown Development Fund applications that the governing body has approved. There are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may award the, may fund the award at $31,129.44. Two, the governing body may fund the award at a different amount. But three, the governing body may not fund the award of the Downtown Development Fund application. And staff recommends the governing body award, fund the award at $31,129.44. On a fiscal note, the Downtown Development Fund has a current unawarded balance of $68,078.60. Based on the potential reimbursement score to remind staff, approving this application will leave a remaining balance of $36,949.16. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I appreciate you listening to the other ones that we approved, Dante. So as far as the ones that are, have already approved, have they been completed, or are they in selling process, or? So what happens when they're completed? Do they notify you, and then, then that's when the funds are expended, or?
Yep, they'll call on their final building. Yep, they'll call in their final building inspection, and either us planners will try to join the inspectors on that, or we'll set up something else with the applicant, and then they'll submit the receipts to us once we verify that the work was done, that they've paid them out, and then we'll reimburse them. I believe just one has been completed. We're still waiting on receipts or the final inspection for the other three.
What's the, I just have an off-the-wall question. What's the anniversary date that we started this?
Um, off the top of my head, I do not know.
Started the Downtown Development Fund?
Uh-huh. And if you don't know, that's fine, I just, it was an off-the-wall question that I thought of right just now.
I don't know. Has the Downtown Development Fund even happened before, coming into the city, I believe, before twenty twenty?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this round, were you talking about this most recent round, Mayor?
Or when it actually, when the commission actually formed?
I guess both. I mean, I didn't really have, but it did restart, right?
Yeah, so it was, there's been four different distributions. The first three were in kind of three consecutive years. I would say maybe like twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen may have been those three years, or may have been even a little bit prior to that. This most recent round, I don't recall. I think it's, all of these awards have been granted in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
You may have announced it right before the first of the year, but.
So this new transition kind of helped kick off the downtown dollars funding and applications for it?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Good. No, good use of dollars, so.
Just another off-the-wall question. In our, when we went through that whole budget workshop during the commission meeting, did we cut funding back a little bit on this, for the next budget year, or for this budget year?
This is, this has never been a recurring line item. This is kind of awarded as you have it, you set aside.
Right, I remember.
You set aside money. I think the original idea, not that it couldn't become a sort of a recurring fund, was to sort of create the demand by, hey, here's two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand, whatever you set, when you, when you created that budget, and, you know, when the dollars are gone, the dollars are gone.
Right.
And so the commission's used that approach in all four distributions. Now, could the commission create a recurring line item? Yes, but right now it's not.
Sure. Well, old guy on the commission, I know why we started this, is to help, again, the Development Downtown Fund, help develop the downtown to meet those needs of those developers to try and bring business into the downtown area to stimulate that growth, which through these funds, it's done a really good job. But that was just my question, is, I know we were looking at those different items, and I didn't know.
And the original funds used were, when we first created the Starbond District.
Right.
We calculated if there was a Starbond project, what would, and I think that was around twenty fourteen, what would the resources be going to that, and then we set those aside and eliminated them from the general fund, so that we wouldn't get used to that revenue stream. For, even when a Starbond project came along, we wouldn't have that revenue stream anymore. So, one of the uses was reinvesting into the downtown. And so, yeah, there was enough there because of the gap between creating the district and a project actually coming along. You had a pretty sizable gap, and so you were able to fund, among other things, three, three installments of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Well, and my only hesitation on this one is, is that we have, the same individual has three different ones, and so I was hoping that one or two could be completed, because again, this is an additional, I mean, this is almost a hundred thousand dollars into one person, you know, and so, I mean, that's what I'm curious about, if any of those have been completed, so it's not, because you can get really, you know, behind and stuck, but once these dollars are allocated, they're allocated, and so, you know, I don't know. I know there's no rules on you having to complete a project before you apply for another one, but I'm just concerned with having, you know, a big chunk of the fund out under one person, one individual's name. So I didn't know if Tony Huber had completed either one of the two projects, that he's at three twenty-five, or one was, one oh-nine. Granted, if he had, then that makes the decision a lot easier for me, otherwise I'm wondering, you know, do we wait till one of those are completed before, you know, awarding additional funds, so.
Do you know that three twenty-five North Main Street is the one that is completed and yet been reimbursed? There's a retailer that?
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I do think, though, that any retailer, any builder is still taking a risk, because it's only a percentage of their upfront cost. It's all their upfront costs, and then they get reimbursed, so.
And, you know, it's, over the years, it's been the commission's will to help, to help support the downtown with this type of funding, but again, it's the commission's will, I mean, we can put whatever, and we kind of, over those funding experiences, we've kind of created rules to meet those needs with even like this matrix that we see here. I mean, we can, we can create other rules if we want, I mean, it's, it's out of discretion on how we, how we allocate this funding as the governing body sees fit.
No, I move that.
The whole point, oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I appreciate that.
I'm just saying, the whole point of it is, is to really help the downtown develop and to bring in business into the downtown area.
And I think it's, I think it's done that, I mean, I appreciate these funding, and I know it's a percentage, might, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're making sure everything is completed, so, but, yeah, with that, I want, I'll move that we fund the award at thirty-one thousand one twenty-nine forty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, before we go to the next item, I think we'll take a five-minute break, is that okay? You guys?
Okay.
Recession for five minutes?
Recession for five minutes?
Okay.
Or do we need a little longer?
Five minutes works.
Five minutes, okay.
Do we need a motion for that, is that a thing?
No.
Okay.
Just recess for maybe a little.
Recession for about five minutes, we'll come back at three.
Oh, two.
Three oh-two.
Yep.
Okay, three oh-two.
Ready, break.
I know we need to, we need to.
I found the memo.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I said I can teach them on those things.
Because these people.
When it started.
Like it is dirty.
Extra hot?
What?
Now that.
This is his presentation.
Just because.
I know this is going to get more.
Hey, Mike.
I don't think the change of administration is going to make it any easier or harder to make it.
It makes me nervous because they got us.
That's why I need it for us.
You can need a printout for your decision.
Okay.
I can.
My best idea is.
What I do is I don't have to.
I know, but like, I don't think it's obvious, but I can see my fault.
I know.
I have to be like this thing.
What is your item though?
It's in there, it's on my.
Oh, yeah.
But I do like the idea of small, record.
Of course, this is a cutaway.
Oh, is it?
I'm gonna tell you.
Do you want just the number memo?
But I mean, if they are controlled, then they have tips.
I'm gonna print this, but it's in way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm not.
Just because I think they're so expensive.
They last, you know, and I'm glad we don't have them, because I, I mean, you drive
all the way around, you know what I'm saying, but, and then we don't have them, you know? But, yeah, somehow, I mean, I feel bad for me, because I just think about those people working for us, and how the real estate market, not to, it just, it concerns.
Gee, you mad?
One of those days, man.
Trying to hit you in the foot.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want to, you know, because you think that, a lot of people work because they think all this, but, yeah, I did some work with them, but.
It's not a hard place to work.
It's, especially with the, not the one that's now, but the one previous.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Really?
Oh, is it?
Oh, yes.
They are newish for me.
So, yeah.
They got them last year.
That's been waiting.
I agree.
That's something specific in my language.
Yeah, just, have it through here, it's a percent since twenty fifty.
Something nice to have.
Yeah.
I don't mind.
Yeah, my, my, I just, I just, thanks for having my glasses.
Well, I, I like.
They used to talk to Adam.
They used to talk to Adam.
Yes, because I used to have.
Like no notes.
They always fall down.
So, it's been most of my time.
I'm just thankful we don't have to use it to start.
They go to one of the.
School districts, the school districts the same way.
Wow.
Yours.
General, general.
Drop some.
Yeah.
It's like a boss's job every five seconds.
Sounds like a hit right on that pedal.
Hey, you're gonna do it for me, buddy.
Case broke?
Yeah, it's been broke.
Oh.
My kids.
I just, I don't get kids.
Yeah.
Your kids are from Michael, too.
Yeah.
I'm not there for that.
You guys need new kids?
They also do birthday events.
Yep.
So, there's nothing happening at this?
Nobody else.
So.
Well, I mean, it's also nice, kind of, when you read word for word from there, I can copy it at ease, and then go in and change the little words you didn't want to say.
Before they come, they change the.
Okay, that is the end of our recess, we'll continue with item twelve F.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Mayor and Commissioners, I lost my mouse.
Did it die?
Item twelve F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an Enterprise Fleet Management Master Equity Lease Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. A little bit on the background of this, back in January of this year, twenty twenty-four, senior staff met with Ken Olson from Enterprise Fleet Management, we refer to him as Enterprise and the rest of this, their, his group, to learn more about their equipment leasing program for local government. Following the COVID nineteen pandemic, as you well know, the supply chain for obtaining materials and equipment, vehicles, came to an almost complete standstill, and staff wanted to explore options for possibly leasing equipment used in the city's day-to-day operations. A committee of employees was assembled, including members from the Public Works and Utilities Fleet, Garden City Police Department, and Garden City Fire Department. This group researched what other Kansas communities that were using the enterprise system thought about it, and if there was any benefits to continue to use it and its effectiveness. All of the communities, including Salina, Derby, Emporia, Liberal, and Lindmore, were very complimentary of the program, and they shared their experiences with the committee. The committee would like to take the next steps in obtaining some official pricing on how the program would work if the City of Garden City started with a limited number of vehicles from the fleet. This would include, the, the, the committee narrowed it down to these few vehicles, that would include six police cars, a mixture of one-half-ton pickups, ten of those, several, from several different departments across the city, and two administrative small sedans. So before the governing body today is consideration and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Enterprise for its master equity lease agreement, and then any trade-in of any existing city fill, city fleet, or leasing of any new piece of equipment would require approval of the governing body at a subsequent meeting. This really just authorizes us to take the next step, and you're not committing to anything. So alternatives would be that the governing body may choose to authorize the mayor to sign the master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, or the governing body may choose not to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Staff recommends alternative one, that you authorize the mayor to sign this master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, and there is no fiscal impact allowing the mayor to sign this agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion that the mayor signs the master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item twelve G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the Agreement for Legal Services with Dorian Giselle Cunningham, PA, which proposes an increase in the hourly rates for services provided by DGC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The City of Garden City entered into an agreement for legal services with Dorian Giselle Cunningham, PA, DGC, on November second, twenty twenty-one. The agreement established DGC as provider for legal services to the city, appointing Jennifer Cunningham as city attorney. The agreement outlined the scope of services, which includes the following responsibilities: Preparing for and attending city commission meetings to advise the governing body and city staff on legal matters, both in advance of and during such meetings; advising city commissioners on legal issues relating to their public office duties; assisting city staff with various legal concerns, including employment laws, personnel matters, municipal code drafting, and enforcement, zoning, contracts, and litigation; drafting and reviewing legal documents such as ordinances, resolutions, and contracts; identifying and coordinating with outside counsel when specialized legal expertise is necessary; and providing ongoing support and consultation for city staff on legal issues that arise during daily operations. The agreement also stipulates that the hourly rates for legal services are subject to annual review and adjustment based on the recommendation of the city manager and approval by the governing body. As part of the twenty twenty-four review, the city manager has recommended increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services provided by James Dummermuth from a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. This adjustment aligns with market trends and recognizes the increasing complexity of legal work performed by DGC for the city. The rate for Jennifer Cunningham remains unchanged at a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. Amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services formalizes this recommended adjustment and reflects the city's commitment to receive high-quality legal representation while maintaining a fair and transportation compensation structure. Now, there are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. The governing body may approve amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. The governing body may deny the amendment number one and maintain the current hourly rate for legal services, and the governing body may provide staff with additional direction. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body approve amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour, effective December first, twenty twenty-four. Now, fiscal note on this is the proposed increase in hourly rates will impact the legal services budget for the city. The actual financial impact will depend on the number of hours of service required in twenty twenty-four and beyond. Monthly billing statements provided by DGC will reflect these updated rates and continue to include itemized descriptions of services rendered. From January first, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Dummermuth has completed nine hundred and sixty-nine point six hours of work built to the City of Garden City, or around ninety-seven hours per month. The number of hours worked each month can vary greatly, but assuming an average of ninety-seven hours built per month, the anticipated additional cost per month with the new rate will be approximately one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions the governing body may have.
Mayor, will we approve amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars per hour?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item twelve H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve entering into a master services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates from Overland Park, Kansas, for engineering services related to the maintenance and operation.
The agreement outlined the scope of services, which includes the following responsibilities. Preparing for and attending city commission meetings to advise the governing body and city staff on legal matters, both in advance of and during such meetings. Advising city commissioners on legal issues relating to their public office duties. Assisting city staff with various legal concerns, including employment laws, personnel matters, municipal code drafting, and enforcement, zoning, contracts, and litigation. Drafting and reviewing legal documents such as ordinances, resolutions, and contracts. Identifying and coordinating with outside counsel when specialized legal expertise is necessary. And providing ongoing support and consultation for city staff on legal issues that arise during daily operations. The agreement also stipulates that the hourly rates for legal services are subject to annual review and adjustment based on the recommendation of the city manager and approval by the governing body. As part of the twenty twenty four review, the city manager has recommended increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services provided by James Dummermuth from a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. This adjustment aligns with market trends and recognizes the increasing complexity of legal work performed by DGC for the city. The rate for Jennifer Cunningham remains unchanged at a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. Amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services formalizes this recommended adjustment and reflects the city's commitment to receive high-quality legal representation while maintaining a fair and transportation compensation structure. Now, there are three alternatives for the governing body to choose from. The governing body may approve amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. The governing body may deny the amendment number one and maintain, maintain the current hourly rate for legal services. And the governing body may provide staff an additional direction. It is staff's recommendation that the governing body approve amendment number one to the Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars an hour effective December first, twenty twenty four. Now, the fiscal note on this is the proposed increase in hourly rates will impact the legal services budget for the city. The actual financial impact will depend on the number of hours of service required in twenty twenty four and beyond. Monthly billing statements provided by DGC will reflect these updated rates and continue to include itemized descriptions of services rendered. From January first, twenty twenty four to October thirty first, twenty twenty four, Mr. Dummermuth has completed nine hundred and sixty-nine point six hours of work billed to the city of Garden City, or around ninety-seven hours per month. The number of hours worked each month can vary greatly, but assuming an average of ninety-seven hours billed per month, the anticipated additional cost per month with the new rate will be approximately one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions the governing body may have.
Mayor, move to approve amendment number one to the Agreement Le, Agreement for Legal Services, increasing the hourly rate for assistant city attorney services to a hundred and seventy dollars per hour.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item twelve H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve entering into a master services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates from Overland Park, Kansas, for engineering services related to the maintenance and operation of the city's electric distribution system.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is very similar to a master service agreement that you just approved just a little bit ago. This one, the Garden City Electric Department, works with several different engineering firms to assist with maintaining and operating the electrical distribution system. This includes pole testing, transformer testing, relay and substation calibrations, power line construction, et cetera. The department would like to add the engineering firm of Kim Lee Horn and Associates from Overland Park, Kansas, to the list of firms to obtain additional project experience. Like most engineering firms, Kim Lee Horn and Associates require a master service agreement with the organization that they may be doing business with. In this case, it'd be the city of Garden City. If the governing body approves the master services agreement, any in future, any future expenses associated with Kim Lee Horn and Associates would follow the city of Garden City's financial guidelines, and either dispute task orders that would come in front of the commission. So the alternatives would be, the governing body may choose to authorize the mayor to sign this master services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates from Overland Park, Kansas. Or alternative two, the governing body may choose not to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Staff recommends, alternative one, you authorize the mayor to sign the master service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, and there is no financial impact by signing, by agreement to approve this master services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the master service agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates from Overland Park, Kansas. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Twelve I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of one Pierce commercial tanker and one Skeeter brush truck.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Step request that the governing body approve the purchase of two fire apparatuses for use at Station Three. The purchase of the fire apparatus for use at Station Three was identified in the twenty twenty-two general obligation bond. That apparatus will be purchased through Sourcewell Contracts, Sourcewell Contract, Sourcewell's a nationwide collectively solicited procurement program that solicits proposals on a, on a array of products. Staff began meeting in twenty twenty-two to determine what types of apparatus would be needed for Station Three. An aerial brush truck, pumper, and a tender were selected. Staff began working on, with Conrad Fire to design and inspect the apparatus. Previously, the purchase of initial first-out apparatus, an aerial and pumper, for Station Three were approved due to the turnaround times being forty-eight months. With the quickly approaching opening date, staff recommend moving forward with ordering brush trucks three, brush three and tender three to complete the apparatus battery for Station Three. Through Sourcewell, Conrad Fire Equipment has provided the following options for the purchase of brush truck and, brush three and tender three. As it relates to brush three, a Skeeter brush truck was selected to be considered for the price of three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. As it relates to the tender, to tender three, a Pierce commercial tanker was selected to be considered for the price of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total purchasing price of brush three and tender three would be eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Due to impressive progression being made on Station Three's construction and rapidly approaching end service date, staff recommend moving forward with the purchase of both apparatus and out. Alternative four, you, the governing body may approve the purchase of a commercial tanker and one Skeeter brush truck from Conrad Fire for the total of eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Alternative two, the governing body may deny the purchase of one Pierce tanker and a Skeeter brush truck and provide staff with alternative. Staff recommends. Governing body approve the purchase of a Pierce commercial tanker and one Skeeter brush truck from Conrad Fire for eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Fiscal note, these purchases will be funded from the point-three sales tax, utilizing remaining funds of the GO bond. The costs will be, the costs will be paid from GO account four zero three, seven seven one, zero zero dash six six one six. In late twenty twenty-one and during twenty twenty-two, in preparation for the bond assurance for the cost of the third fire station, the city estimated a total cost of the four apparatus for the Station Three at three million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. With the purchase of the brush truck and the tanker, the total cost for the four, four apparatuses for Station Three will be three million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents. This cost is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents above the estimated cost or four point six percent increase. The increased cost can be attributed to the increase, increases seen on equipment and vehicles over the last few years. We have to answer any questions for you.
So Chief, what do you anticipate the life, the life exec expectancy of these? I mean, I know you guys take really good equi, of your equipment, but I'm just curious about the life expectancy.
Everyone's different. So an aerial is twenty-five years, an engine, which would be a pumper, would be twenty, a brush truck is fifteen years, and tanker should be twenty.
So on the, the overage of the, the amount, where, how are we gonna, is that somewhere in the budget that we can kind of sneak that in, or?
Yeah, so with Station Three.
I mean, I know we're ahead of schedule and everything is.
And a little bit under, under budget.
Okay.
So hoping some of that contingency is around, so if you can come back and cover the costs for that.
Okay. Otherwise, it would come out of the general fund, or?
No, it'd just be the sales tax.
Oh, just, okay. So the sales tax would just.
It's budgeted from the federal bond, so.
Nice. Okay, that's why I wanted to know if we were, okay. I make the motion that we approve the purchase of the commercial tanker and brush truck for Station Three, tender three and brush three. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess, do I need to state the amount because it is over?
With consensus, I think, we're okay.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Item twelve J, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Community Health Advisory Board.
Good afternoon again. The Community Health Advisory Board, CHAD, is made up of nine members appointed by the governing body. The board is charged with advising the governing body on policy matters and programs as they relate to community health and physical environment. There are three terms that are set to end on December thirty-first. One of those members, Isaac Acosta, will be, is willing and interested in serving a three-year term again. If reappointed, this would be Mr. Acosta's first full term as he filled a vacancy last, vacant position last year. One member who served as a designated spot for the Vinnie County Health Department representative, Dana Alina Ontiveras resigned from the board in October twenty twenty-four. Shruti Chahara, director, has submitted an application to fill that vacancy and begin her first full term, three years, on January first, twenty twenty-five. The Community Health Advisory Board met on November twelfth and recommended reappointing Mr. Acosta to his first full three-year term and appointing Ms. Chahara to the five, to the Vinnie County Health Department spot. This leaves one vacancy remaining, and the board will consider additional applications at the December meeting. There are two alternatives in front of you. The governing body may appoint Shruti Chahara to fill the current Vinnie County Health Department vacancy and to reappoint Isaac Acosta to serve on the CHAD board for a three-year term to begin on January first, twenty twenty-five. Or two, the governing body may appoint another representative to the vacant Vinnie County Health Department position and appoint an alternative community member to serve in the remaining two vacancies. The Community Health Advisory Board recommends the governing body appoint Shruti Chahara to fill the current Vinnie County Health Department vacancy and reappoint Isaac Acosta to serve on the Community Health Advisory Board for a three-year term to begin on January first, twenty twenty-five. I have to answer any questions that you guys have?
Mayor, move to approve alternative number one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, that concludes all the business items under new business. We have a consent agenda with four additional business items. If you don't want to pull any of those off and talk about them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items thirteen A through D.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items thirteen A through thirteen D.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
That wraps up our business. Time for Commissioner reports.
All right, so we got Commissioner Andrew.
Wow, that's, this has been a marathon meeting, so I just appreciate everyone's attention and then during, especially when we were able to discuss the police department's new home, or new temporary or new permanent home. I know that's a big, it's a big decision for all of us, and I mean, again, we want to do what's right by not only the police department, but also by our community, so thanks for all the patience on that one. I, it feels like forever ago, but I do, I was really excited about the twenty twenty-four boys, cross-country state champions, that was really neat to see, and it's exciting that they could come, and the pledge of allegiance, that's, I think that was louder than the last time. Now, not as energetic as the last time, but I was really excited about that. There's been so much really incredible information really presented today, the, the pre-meeting, you, you don't, you don't think about energy, but it's going to be a big deal, I mean, it's a big deal right now, but a big deal in the future, and I know there is no, you know, there is no magic formula, and there's no, no one really knows what's going to happen, but really, this idea of planning makes a big difference, and that's why I really appreciate things like the traffic study. I mean, here are things that who would ever think, thought that the city would grow that way, and now all of a sudden, it's exploding in the Northeast, and so that's really exciting. Now, I really appreciate the, just the time and attention, all of these reports and all the work that goes into all of it, especially the time and attention spent by the police department on that, these proposals. And I really enjoy when those who are offering the proposals are able to attend. I know our meetings sometimes are not convenient, but it gives you a chance to ask questions and get clarifications. I'm excited about Shruti joining the Community Health Advisory Board. She is, she's, I mean, she's the, she is the director of the Community Health Department, and so I think she'll be a huge asset to that board, and I just really appreciate Garden City and coming up, eat a lot of Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving's next week, and so we're excited about people having time with families and friends, and if you're traveling, please be safe, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Andrew, next, Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, just wanted to let everybody know, thank the mayor for coming and for claiming this week as American Education Week to Victor Anellis Elementary School on Monday morning. Yeah, great to see us proclaim the Garden City High School twenty twenty-four state boys six A champs, first time in their program history. Congratulations to not only the students, but the coaches as well. And then match day coming up, a very generous community that we have, and hopefully it'll be an even better one this year, but always, always helping out, and we have a great community. On that note, too, also, congratulations to all of the staff on their contribution to the campaign. Our campaign committee does an outstanding job on promoting the Vinnie County United Way, and it just shows, every year, we keep setting a new record, so congratulations to the committee, but also to our staff for being generous and giving back to our community. And then also wanted to mention, we might haven't seen anything yet, but our unified bowling team is at state competition today, so hopefully, hopefully they'll do well, and we might, we might recognize them if they repeat their championship, but we'll, we'll have to wait and see, and that's all I've got. I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sessna, next, Commissioner Landgraf.
Yes, I agree, it was a great pre-meeting this morning, being able to get idea about the current and also future energy and capacity supply options for the future, being able, not just plan out for now, but clear ten-plus years out into the future as well. I was able to attend the Southwest Kansas Coalition Meeting at our regional airport. It's great being able to get together with leaders from neighboring cities and discuss issues in the upcoming state legislative session. One of the things that really stood out to me was just the amount of compliments we got from other city leaders about the regional airport there as well. It's really nice being able to show that to other people as well, and be able to get this great feedback. I was also able to attend the Southwest Kansas Chamber Legislative Appreciation Dinner. It's great being able to hear from both federal and state officials, as well as discussing with the city leaders and local businesses. And finally, just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Landgraf, next, Commissioner Nguyen.
Again, congratulations to the twenty twenty-four Kansas High School Boys Track Team. I think at the beginning of the year, KSHA came out with the top ten, and they were definitely in the lower top ten, so to see them jump to the first place was incredible to witness this year. And then also, a congratulations to the coaches, because it's the first in school history, and they have been coaching for over a decade there, and for them to see all this hard work come to fruition is beautiful. Again, congratulations to all the staff to commit to the United Way campaign. Fifty thousand dollars is tremendous. It is not an easy commitment to make, so thank you for that. Had a pretty busy two weeks in my life. Hung out with remember leaders, helping out with them, to teach them how to tie some ties, and then joined Assistant City Manager Derek Ramos at the First Gen Mixer with Trios Student Support Services, Link Community College, to talk about our experiences as first-generation students, but also just to meet them and hopefully see that, let them see that the future is a little bit brighter than what they might imagine it to be. And then also, joined the veterans at Garden Valley Retirement Village on Veterans Day. Beautiful time there with them, so many great war stories, so many, such a deep, deeper admiration I have for all those people that have served and given me this opportunity to be here today. And lastly, yesterday, I spent some time at Jenny Barker interviewing fifth and sixth graders for their Jingle Bell Shop, so. Quick story to share, one, I think his name is Santiago, Santiago came in, hopefully he sees this and not get too embarrassed, but Santiago comes in, I asked him, hey Santiago, what would you, what, why do you want this job? And he says, to make my mom happy. And I think that was so beautiful, because if, I should start using that line for my next professional interview, and hopefully I get the job too. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen. Okay, so I don't have much either, since you guys talked about everything, and I won't repeat it, but yeah, Mike, if you would, just thank Paul for coming out with KMEA to kind of give his presentation, but yes, we do thank everyone and congratulate everyone on their accomplishments here in Garden City. Just a few things to note that I had is. I kind of like to ask, and this could be written down, or I could pass it on, so that we can maybe talk about it or follow up in, in future meetings, but I know we, we have a lot of discussions on our, on our packet about the nuisances in Garden City, but we never hear the positive outcomes of those nuisances, so, I mean, I'd like to maybe have a count listed on there so that we have a number of how many people are addressing that and following through with what the expectations of Garden City's nuisance and ordinances are. I think that would give a, a light on how many actually come through, but just a small list on that. Also, maybe a, a new business item on there as well, so that we, I mean, there are some new businesses that are popping up here around town, and I don't think we know all of them. Some of them I kind of find out on Facebook, and it's, it's neat to find that, and I appreciate the social media maybe kind of relaying some of that, so good job on figuring out and feeding that information on our social media. But maybe something on there also with that. I haven't heard a lot in the past of our childcare situation and our housing, so if maybe there's an update on those two items as well, that would kind of help. Just some healthy, positive information, I believe, would, especially coming around in the holidays, would be great to hear about the positive news, but. Yeah, with that, the last one I have is about shopping local. We did pass a proclamation here a couple of meetings ago of shopping local, so I'd just like to stress that on our citizens and surrounding neighbors to shop local. There is the proclamation that was approved for, it's a Shop Local Saturday event, so it's kind of between your Black Friday and your Cyber Monday, and this is a national proclamation that they've started a few years back, but yeah, shop local, continue growing. Thanks for the leadership in Garden City, thanks for the efforts all around, so with that, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.